Starting live stream.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Herkimer School Board, April fifteenth. We'll start with the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the list is approval of the agenda, and I get a motion for that. Scott, second by Bob. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor? Seven zero. Next on the list, Board Communication.
You received some electronic communication which were not included in the original packet, which will be included in the supplemental materials.
Do I still have to make a motion like I usually do?
Please do, Ms. Gilbert.
I'll make a motion to place all appropriate Board Communications on fire with the District Clerk.
So we have a motion by Ms. Gilbert, second. Ms. Bray, any discussion on that? All those in favor? Seven zero. Next on the list, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting Wednesday, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty. Get a motion on that. Mr. Tutu, second by Ms. Fisher. Any discussion on the agenda? For the minutes, I'm sorry. All those in favor? Seven zero. Next on the list, Business Reports.
Looking for the Board to acknowledge receipt of items A through IA.
The motion for A through I. Ms. Fisher? We got a second on that?
A second.
Let's go over. Any discussion on any of those items? All those in favor? Looking for a motion on Bosie's Brick Equipment Resolution. You got a motion on that? Mr. Tutu, second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion on that item? All those in favor? Seven zero.
You guys hearing background noise too?
Yeah.
I don't know, I see Diane twice.
Me too.
Yeah, me too.
Brian, can you meet your microphone?
It's gone.
Gone.
So we're on the Bosie's Brick Equipment.
Did we? No, we passed that.
Okay. And we're on the Budget Presentation.
Not for nothing, I can see Diane three times now.
Good evening. Welcome to the April fifteenth, two thousand twenty, twenty-one Budget Presentation for the Herkimer Central School District. I usually have done Budget Presentations that are pretty similar throughout the February, March, April timeframe. Tonight has some additions due to some circumstances that have arisen that we're all aware of. So the COVID nineteen pandemic has influenced or had impact on state and federal governments and local governments across the world, actually. But for us, for right now, the state aid reduction creates about a one point eight five million dollar deficit. So to close a deficit this late in the year, we we had to work pretty hard as administrative team over the last month, thinking about what we would do differently, and we're really proposing like a three-pronged attack on trying to close that gap. Internally, we've looked at proposing not replacing approximately four FTE of instructional positions through attrition. This won't be through layoffs. This will be through naturally people that have either retired or left the district. Those reductions and some other some other efficiencies that we'll make save the district about three hundred fifty thousand dollars. We also propose to appropriate about one point one million dollars to support the two thousand twenty-one budget, and we're proposing a four point four nine percent tax increase, which is under the levy limit. This will raise about four hundred thousand dollars for the district. So those three measures we're going to we're going to use to close that one point eight five or proposing to use to close the one point eight five million dollar budget deficit. The superintendent's budget at this point, since the Board has not approved it, totals twenty-five point one seven five million dollars. That's an increase of about nine hundred sixty-five thousand from the twenty-four two million, twenty-four point two one million dollar budget from last year, the nineteen twenty budget. You see a program increase of about three point five percent, a capital increase of about seven point four percent, and an administrative budget increase of about one point four percent. What's driving the budget issues are revenues, really more than expenditures. You you see that the the projection for foundation aid from nineteen twenty to twenty twenty-one is down about four hundred thousand. So let's see. Sorry, lost my. The foundation aid. State aid appears to be approximately flat with an estimated aid increase of about thirty-six thousand. But the big the big problem, the big issue that we're having is that there's going to be a net foundation aid decrease this year. We noted, we what the Governor essentially did was reduce our 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 foundation aid by about five hundred thousand and then give us back the five hundred thousand through a federal through the federal funds that they received through the recent federal legislation to respond to the COVID epidemic. Also, we we are projecting several of our expense aids are going to be lower than what we had projected earlier in the year. The tax levy limit for this year is approximately nine point eight four eight four million dollars, about four point eight six percent. That's calculated through a complicated series of of computations, and we get numbers from both the state and and local governments to get those calculate to get that calculation. We are proposing to, or we have two options. We can either stay under the levy limit, in which case we need a simple majority, fifty percent plus one, or we have option two, we can have a super majority, sixty percent or greater. What's driving the increases in the budget in the capital component? We have the bulk of the increase in the capital component is due to the debt service increase of two hundred sixty-three thousand, along with about thirty-one thousand in benefits and salary. These increases are offset by reduction of the shared facility position by point two FTE, saving about twenty-five thousand. We will, we are continuing or proposing to continue with the capital outlay project, which is about a hundred, which is a hundred K in value. The the capital outlay costs a hundred thousand in twenty twenty-one, but it generates ninety-three thousand dollars in the following year. This is important work. It consists of computer work and infrastructure work that's important for the district. The district continues to leave the business official position vacant, the assistant superintendent position vacant, and the combined athletic director and and assistant principal position. Filling these positions would have added approximately three hundred thousand to the budget. Further, we have eliminated the board attendance at NISBA conferences and the superintendent's attendance at NISCUS conferences, saving approximately ten thousand. We have reduced administrative conferences by another five thousand and reduced Bosie's HR services by six thousand. Modest increases in salary and for administrators and their support staff, along with increases in benefits costs of about thirty-seven are more than offset by the streamlined administrative structures which we have run with since around two thousand thirteen. The largest increase in the program is created by the salary and benefits with a growth of about a half a million dollars, followed by Bosie's special programs expenses of about four hundred thousand with additional trans expenses of about thirty thousand, trans meaning transportation expenses. These increases will be offset by not replacing three FTE of anticipated retiring or exiting staff, along with shifts to shared services through Bosie's with other area schools. We also plan to return as many students as possible to existing in-house special education programs. High school and middle school program highlights, we're going to continue our Ag and STEM programs. We're going to continue our driver education program. We're going to continue the college art program. We're going to continue the Project Lead the Way with Frankfurt. We're going to continue the VP Tech six and at our sixth core. We're going to expand, we're going to continue our expansion of community use of facilities. We're going to reduce two FTE by attrition and reassignment. We're going to increase use of Bosie's aided shared personnel if possible. We're going to increase use of online and remote learning wherever possible. The elementary program, we're going to continue after-school swim instruction. We're going to continue our summer programs. We're going to maintain class sizes. We're going to add a full-time school counselor, and we will reduce two FTE elementary through attrition. Special education increase in what we we've seen increases in enrollment in high-needs programs throughout this year. We're going to maximize use of in-district special education programs next year, and we're going to try to continue our shift to least restrictive environment as part of both of those endeavors. We're going to continue our shift to one-one computing. It's clearly noted by our recent shift to remote instruction in homes that this is really a critical mission, mission critical for our district going forward. We're going to, and as a part of that, we're going to continue our sequence of Bosie aided multi-year purchases. Taking a look at the tax levy history since two thousand twelve, the tax increase of four point four nine percent is in line with the trends over the last ten years, particularly during economic downturns and under the levy limit of four point eight six percent. Taking a look at our fund balance use, fund balance use is up significantly but offset by savings from from two thousand nineteen twenty and viewed as temporary as a COVID pandemic is unique, and we hope temporarily slowing the economic growth. We will not be able to sustain the use of these levels of fund balance if state aid is not restored and increased going forward. If you take a look at our savings plan on slide eighteen, the financial position of the district we're projecting will be about the same in two thousand, in June of two thousand twenty as it is this year. And we believe that the district will be in a sound position for two thousand twenty, twenty-one. We will not, the only the only change is that we will likely not make this the contribution of the capital fund that we had anticipated this year, but hope to return to our savings plan no later than than twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Important dates, May sixth, two thousand twenty was scheduled to be the hearing date, but it will be a BOE meeting to approve our budget, we hope. May twentieth, we hope to have another BOE meeting. That was a scheduled regular meeting. We don't have a date yet for BOE petitions to be due. The only thing we know about the budget vote date is it's sometime after June first, June first or after, and we await guidance from the Governor on the dates for the both the petitions and and the budget vote. Are there any questions?
Hey, Rob, I had a few.
Go ahead.
I just kind of run down through them. You talked about sharing services. Do we, do we know which ones we're identifying at this point?
Well, it's it's a a shared service is something that takes two to tango, so I proposed to other superintendents in the area some possibilities for sharing those positions, and they would be positions that were already either part-time or vacant.
So it's up in the air at this point?
It certainly is, because most of these changes that we're talking about are not done at the districts in the area. We're looking this way, looking at that until now.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so that's something that's decided at a later date.
Correct. There's active discussions, but sometimes it takes a while to get to a final decision from two districts as to what what it's going to look like.
So does it, does that, you reflect that in anywhere in the budget, that there's potential for that?
Happened was if we budget for a part-time teacher, and let's say that part-time teacher's salary imprint is between salary and benefits and everything is forty-five or fifty thousand, then if we shifted to a Bosie's coaster for that, then we would shift money from salary and benefits to the Bosie's line to support it. So we'll have to do transfers to make that happen, but generally you would transfer for, so you might trade a fifty thousand dollar footprint for a full-time teacher for a thirty-five thousand dollar coaster, and then the following year you might get. It's or not.
So right now, as we look at those numbers, that doesn't show the benefit of that potential sharing?
No, it does not.
Okay, all right.
So because I can't really count on it right now, because in order to do the share, I have to get a partner, and I don't necessarily have a partner in all the shares that are potential out there.
Right, right. So we we could potentially be in a slightly better position down the road if that happens.
Correct. So what would happen would be a double thing, it would actually save us double, because it would hopefully lower our expense on the on the appropriation side this year and next year in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, and we'll get more aid in that year as well. So those moves will be made to not only improve your our position for two thousand twenty-one, but also to improve our revenue position in two thousand twenty-two.
So the special ed shift, what what is what does that actually mean? Like, why, why didn't we do it in the past if it was going to save us money?
Um. Well, what happened would be, let's suppose, and that's the question that I've asked, and I think certainly you you should ask that question and and should ask is, if we have a twelve-one-one program at in our school district at a particular age level and a student's placed at a Bosie's in that same, why is that? Now, there could be reasons for the, some programs are very specialized because the the needs of the child are very specialized, and it's not just twelve-one-one. It might be twelve-one-one autism, and you have to have special training to be in an autism program. So some of those details I wouldn't want, this is just hypothetical. So there could be reasoning why one-one, one twelve-one-one program at Bosie's is specialized for a particular need that a child has versus ours. But there is times when our, when our two programs, the Bosie's programs and the Herkimer programs overlap, and we're looking to see if we can maybe maximize the use of our local programs instead of sending students to a Bosie's program.
Okay, so that's that's up in the air too, as far as.
Correct.
All right, I got two more quick questions. You talk about the the attrition to HES staff. How are we going to maintain class sizes if we're not filling those positions?
Sure. So I mean, the details of that would be that when you look at certain class sizes, certain class sizes are smaller than others, and nobody's really been notified of that yet, so I really wouldn't want to identify that particularly yet. Because it won't impact the job, but it'd impact what classes somebody might be teaching. So we want to do that on a live stream tonight.
No, I got you, but there's a way to increase class sizes. That's all I'm asking.
Sure. So if a class, suppose, suppose a class only has eighty kids in it or seventy-five kids in it, and we were going to have five sections of it next year, then that would only be about fifteen kids in a class versus if it's four, then it would be about eighteen or nineteen?
Yeah, yeah. So our projected, our projected class sizes will allow for that to happen, is what you're saying.
Correct. We won't, we won't have like class sizes of thirty because we do this change. We'll have class size still around under twenty.
Gotcha. One last thing, when you talk about the our use of fund balance of what, one point one million? Is, does that reflect that five hundred thousand coming back to us or, because I know that's a little confusing to me still.
That reflects that in order to close the gap from our appropriations to our proposed revenues, I needed to appropriate that much to get to a balanced budget.
Right.
And that assumes that we're probably going to lose about a half million dollars in aid. So if we get half million, then we probably wouldn't need that much.
Okay, so we're we're not seeing.
Or two, we could lose as much as a million dollars in aid.
We're not seeing that coming back to us yet, because you're just, you're saying I'm going to be cautious and not put it in there because we don't know yet.
Correct. I mean, the the projections, so the Governor has said we're going to get basically flat aid. However, there's also three, three times that they can take the aid back, and I don't think I, I don't think I went through my notes quite careful enough when we started this, because I was probably nervous with this new technique for doing presentations. But so it's likely that we are going to lose somewheres between a half million and a million dollars. He says we're going to get eight point six right now, but in, at the end of this month, they're going to, they're going to look at the revenues for the state, and they're going to say, we are not getting as much revenue as we want. So then they're going to look to take back some of the appropriations that they've sent out to schools and Medicaid and things like that. So we're going to probably get a takeback in it later this month, and we'll get a sense of where we're headed. And the estimates that we've talked to experts about have said it's going to be some, for our district, it'll be somewheres between a half million and a million dollars. So we're starting at a half million and prepared if it's possible, though it could be as much as a million dollars in foundation aid that the Governor will take back from us.
Yeah, so we're using six fifty of our fund balance, and you're making adjustments to make up the other half of that. We're not technically using one point one million, or am I not seeing that right? You know, you talked about the FTEs and sharing services and making up some.
So if if I didn't make any changes at all, we would have needed, if we didn't raise taxes and we didn't make any cuts, we would have needed one point eight five million dollars in fund balance to close the gap. But because we've made approximately three hundred fifty thousand in cuts, shortcuts, then we only need to make up one point six, and if we raise taxes by four hundred thousand, then we're down, excuse me, one point five million. And then if we raise taxes by four hundred thousand, now we only need one point one million.
Okay.
So so the budget gap was closed by use of one point one in fund balance, one point one million in fund balance, four hundred thousand in new taxes, and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in in cuts. Now, there could be, we could cut more than the three fifty, but I also think we could lose more than five hundred thousand. That's why I would be looking to make changes in efficiencies if we can to get more savings. But again, we wouldn't be doing that through looking to directly cut positions. Does that make sense?
But yeah, but yes, but then we may be, we may at some point reflect that five hundred thousand coming back to us from the federal money.
Correct. If the federal government comes through and the state doesn't take any more away from us, then we would probably, we wouldn't have to use that much fund balance, and we probably would be able to put away some of the money that we were supposed to for the capital fund at the end of next year.
Because then you're you're at seven hundred thousand in fund balance.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I would not count on us not being, I don't, I wouldn't count on us being whole at this point at the end of the year. I think that would be, it would be great if that happens, but I yeah, I wouldn't count on it. I think some people are going to use projections much more dire than I'm using, and he's in a middle ground. Any other questions?
I'm good.
Next on the list is Business Office Updates.
Oh, yes. So we have a MOA with Bernie initiated, indicating Bernie Bus will deliver meals and supplies as directed for the duration of the closure in lieu of regular runs. We're going to continue to work with them to provide instruction and meals to children while we're closed. The nutrition plan, childcare plan, and supplemental education plan are approved. That should be our approved, not is approved and underway. The supplemental education plan maybe may need to be adjusted, so I will get back to you in May if that happens. Scheduling the board, the administrators to report to the Board at the May sixth meeting. We'll have them join us through the Google Hangout and allow them to report to you about how remote learning is going at that point. We should have some good feedback for you. The two thousand nineteen, twenty audit is underway remotely with completion plan for August. The Section Three Athletics has extended the start of the spring season until April thirty, two thousand twenty, and will adjust if the Governor adjusts the closure period. We have delayed negotiations until June for the CSEA and HFA. We're going to restore twelve and eleven-month support personnel, the full, full-time summer hours, April twenty-seven, two thousand twenty. We'll continue to use social distancing techniques and and work in a way that's safe for all our staff, but we will get back to full-time and full operation hours at that point. Building projects may proceed cautiously, is the note from the state. We are proceeding with the closeout of the two thousand fourteen, the closeout of the capital outlay project for this year. We are proceeding with bids for two thousand eighteen, and proceeding will will begin that project as soon as bids are approved in May. And then the last bullet is the rules for everything in education change almost hourly. So I watch the Governor's, I watch the Governor's report every morning and find out what my new, my new rules are. So everything that I told you tonight could change at any moment.
So who's the support personnel that are coming back to work?
Support personnel would be cleaners. They're they're still work, they're working, but they're not working full-time. We have, we have moderated hours right now, but we've developed some projects for them to do. We're going to have a lot of, we're going to have a lot of work to do in terms of keeping kids with computers, computers back and forth, work back and forth. There's a lot of clerical work. There's a lot of maintenance work to do around the school, and we will start to do that, but we'll do it in a way that allows people to be socially distanced while they're here. Anything else?
Okay. Next on the list is Superintendent's Report.
Looking for a motion on staffing.
Ms. Fisher, you get a second? Mr. Mahiavik? Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Seven zero?
I turn it over to you, sir.
Okay. We have on our list tonight. It'll come up here. The Bosie's Board Budget Vote Resolution.
It's roll call, I think.
Yes. So this is a roll call vote for for the Bosie's Board election first. Actually, usually we do this when we we send this in. Should we do this as a roll call vote tonight? Would you like us to send this to you, Sheri?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Did we vote on that?
So we need to vote for the positions on the Bosie's Board. There's four incumbents, and there's four positions. And then we need to vote on the administrative portion of the two thousand twenty, twenty-one Bosie's budget. And this one is a roll call vote. So with people in my window, I'm just going to go through. Brandy?
Somebody move it a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. First, we need a motion for approval. First, we need a motion for approval. Diane, second. Rich? Now we can go through, um, Brandy.
Yeah. You want me?
I'm yes. Diane?
Yes.
Michelle? You're on mute.
Okay, I couldn't get my microphone to work. Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Scott?
Did you, we see this budget pass through?
Yeah, it was in, uh, the Bosie's or the Board of Education folder.
Well, I missed it, so, uh, I'm going to, I can abstain from this, right? If I hadn't seen it?
Yes.
Okay.
So the votes, six zero one. Uh, next on the list is president's update. I just wanted to thank all of the, uh, first responders, all of the doctors and nurses, all of the, um, people at the school that have been keeping, uh, the kids going throughout this closure. And also just like to thank all the parents out there that have, uh, helped with their students because I know that, um, it has been definitely trying times. Going around the room, is there anybody else that has any updates? Okay. Next on the list is meeting evaluation by Mr. Lewis.
I thought it went well. Uh, thanks to Ryan for getting it set up earlier. Started on time. I had some internet connectivity issues, so everyone kind of froze on me, but I could hear everything pretty well. Oh, but all in all, I thought it went well for a first meeting like this.
Very nice.
I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing a particular personnel litigations and negotiations with HFA and CSEA contracts. The board may take action in public session after the executive session ends and the board returns to public session.
So we have a motion. Can we get a second on that? Diane? All those in favor? Seven zero? So it is six thirty-two now. We'll come back at, uh, six forty.
For executive session.
For executive, yeah.
I'm going to stop recording now.